Good evening and welcome to the Monday, August 8th, 2022 School Board Retreat and Workshop for the Mill Creek Township School District Board of Directors. Today, we're meeting at the Mill Creek Education Center. And even though the public is now able to attend in person, we will continue to stream the meetings live on YouTube. And all meetings will be recorded for future viewing. We're also continuing to zoom the meetings as well going forward to enhance participation in them. You can also view this evening's agenda as well as several additional informational items on our website, www.mtsd.org. In addition, please visit us, visit us and like us on our Facebook page, Mill Creek Township School District. I would also like to remind all speakers, core team members and board members to speak clearly and distinctly into their microphones so you can be heard by all attendees this evening, whether they are here in person or viewing us on Zoom or YouTube. Item 1.01, roll call to order, Mrs. Sitter.
Mr. Dean.
Here.
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 Mrs. Sitter.
Ms. Gobeck, are you here with us through Zoom?
Yes, I am. I'm online.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Janice. 1.02 Executive Session Announcement. Executive Session was held August 15th, 2022 for the purpose of personnel. Item 0.03 Approval of the Agenda. Can I have a motion to approve this evening's agenda?
Motion, Janine.
Thank you. Can I have a second? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Against nay, that motion passes. Item 1.04 Pledge of Allegiance, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, for God, universal, liberty, justice for all.
1.0, I'm sorry, 2.01 Visitors Formal Informal Request to Address the Board. Do we have anyone that has signed up for this evening? Is there anyone online that would like to speak this evening under visitor comments? Last call. Is there anyone on the line this evening who'd like to make any comments under the visitor section? Okay, moving on. Item 3, School Board Retreat. 3.01 Superintendent's Goals for 2022-2023. Dr. Roberts?
Thank you, President Mitchell. If I may. If it pleases the board, I want to probably spend some time at a podium because as I present, I'll take copious notes and then as necessary, I'll just get back to my seat. Because there are aspects of this that will be somewhat of a working session where I'm really looking forward to feedback from the board and input from the board with regard to this critical, mission critical item of setting superintendent's goals for school year 2022-2023. Because ultimately, the goals will drive much of what we do as a district next year. So I'm excited about what is to come. There we go. That's fine. My, doing my time today aboard members of the community. Our objective is really to revisit the mission statement of Mill Creek Township School District, and many of us are familiar with, but it's important doing a goal set in conversation for us to anchor the work we are doing in our mission. As well as the mission of the core executive leadership team, a mission that was established two years ago. Secondly, I would like to be able to share the superintendent's goal, but in addition to the superintendent's goal, what I'll share is our admin council's vision for school year 22-23 and beyond. So it's not just for the school year 22-23, but for the foreseeable future, which includes the next two years. And our administrative council, of course, includes all of our districts leaders, our managers, our supervisors, our principals, assistant principals. Essentially, these are individuals who participated in our summer leadership academy. This is a group of individuals who are in sort of leading the work of the district, and we convene monthly in addition to many other one-off meetings. And thirdly, certainly and of utmost importance, my goal tonight is to be able to collaborate with the board for us to establish strategic goals for the next year, and certainly we can think about these goals as also having a long-term impact. What I've done is I've shared, I believe, seven goals. The board would note that they are, there are two additional goals, but in addition, the seven goals includes goals from that we've had last year. It is my belief that having reviewed and done a deep analysis and reflection on those goals, while many of them, we were able to achieve some critical components of the goals, I believe that some of those goals still have a lot of room for growth and improvement, and should we continue to focus on those goals, it will have a positive impact on the work that we do as a district. Of course, to the mission and indulge me, it's the educator to me. So this is repeated information, but when we think of a mission statement, it's our fundamental purpose, right? We know this is our purpose. It's our objective. It's our reason for existing. And our, when we, Mill Creek Township School District, our mission, a mission statement is one that has really driven the work that we've done during my tenure as superintendent and certainly has over the last several years. And it's to provide a world-class education that really prepares 100% of our students to reach their full potential, as well as to prepare them to become lifelong learners and responsible citizens. That's our overall mission as a district. Now, how do we activate this mission? Because it's just there in words and many in the organization, we've all committed to that. When we think of the vision, a vision statement is this picture. It's our North Star. It's what do we want to look like in the future? Where do we see ourselves? It's our source of inspiration, and it should really serve as the, that strategic framework for every single key strategy, every action that we take should move us along the continuum to ultimately achieve the vision we've set for ourselves. It's essentially our future state. What have we agreed to in terms of our vision or collective vision as a district? And while I know that this is a conversation about the superintendent's goal set and the superintendent's vision, I, I think it, it behooves me to make sure that the vision is a collective vision. And so I've certainly enlisted members of our core executive team and admin council in conversations that we've just started. We've all agreed to, and I can tell you, there's a lot of investment into one of the seminal texts and research that will drive the work we do around our mission and vision. And that text that we've shared with the board is Jim Collins' Good to Great. One of the things Jim Collins talks about in there is creating level five leadership. We've seen where many of the most successful organizations in the country and in the world are those that were able to create level five leaders. We have a little bit, had a little bit of a self-assessment during the first three days of our summer leadership academy, where we self-identify identified, where each of us and the district's core team and admin council were on this continuum, this hierarchy of being level five leaders. And, and we land with only one person in the team who identified or self-identified as a level five leader. And you know, based on the feedback that everyone have seen and observed in this individual, they believe that it's, it's a great assessment. It's their self-assessment. So we're not going to argue with that person, and it's not me. I did not self-identify as a level five leader. I also believe that I land somewhere in the continuum between one and four, and so did 99% of our leaders. It was a powerful, powerful experience for us to have. Ultimately, what we want to be able to get to is to create a cadre of level five leaders who will move the needle on every single one of our schools. Each of our schools, we believe that each of our schools, we've all agreed that each of our schools deserve to have level five leadership. And while the concept is primarily being looked at in, in the world of business, maybe to some extent in higher education and even in the military, I think it's prudent for us to start to think about creating a cadre of level five leaders in the K-12 arena. Our collective vision as MTSD leaders, there are five areas that we've talked about, we'll continue to unpack. The first is, we want to be able to improve our academic performance of 100% of our students in the future. We're thinking about our future state when we think vision. Every student who knocks on our doors, we know that they all have areas of growth. While we have students who are exceptional as measured by, measured by their academic achievement, we also know that there's still room for them to grow. And we certainly have students who are those that have academic areas of growth or socio-emotional areas of growth, but our commitment, our vision is to make sure that we are improving the performance of 100% of them. Additionally, we want to create opportunities to meet the needs of 100% of our students. And this is particularly those who are in grades nine through 12, around college and career. For a very long time, we have focused relentlessly, and we've seen the results of being a college-focused K-12 organization. We've seen the numbers. We have significant number of students who are enrolling in colleges, universities, but I think our high school team will share with us that we probably have somewhere between 25 or exceeding 25% of our students who have an interest in career opportunities. And we've started to do some of that work to prepare students for career. Our manufacturing lab, of course, which is a nationally ranked establishment, is one way we're removing the needle on preparing students for college and career. Point three, this, this ambitious goal of becoming a top 5% of school districts, not only in Pennsylvania, but nationally. I truly believe that we're poised to do this in sharing this ambitious goal with members of our admin council and core team. I, I did not get any resistance or any naysayers or anyone with a defeatist mentality. I think we all believe that we can do this because, because we have the right people in place. It's just a matter of, do we have the right people in place in the right seats? And you'll hear us using a lot of the sort of vernacular from Jim Collins' research-based Good to Great, because that's what we've all agreed to focus on as we try to embark upon creating a vision that gets us to that place. We have decided as, as a part of our vision, we want to become a school district that really prioritizes the health, safety, and well-being of 100% of our teammates. Leading through and serving through a global pandemic has really highlighted for us, those of us in K-12 education, the importance of really thinking about the health and well-being of the folks who are in our midst. Certainly, this is not a point that we've neglected in K-12 education over the years, but the last two years, certain, two years certainly has brought this more to the forefront. And so we want to make sure that as we think about the health, well-being, and safety of all of our teammates, we are, and certainly when I unpack this with the board, we are going to look at bullet points and measures of success that includes safety and security. Do we have the right security structure in place? Do we have the right sort of, sort of physical presence of personnel to ensure that our safety and security is of utmost importance? And this includes not only SROs, but as I think about health, well-being, safety, and security, I'm thinking, do we have the right group of nurses? Do we have the right set of counselors? Do we have the right amount of SAP or multi-health providers? So we want to make sure that the vision that we are setting for Mill Creek Township School District is, this is a district when anyone is expressing an interest to come and work with us to serve here, they can say that that's a district that prioritizes the health, safety, and well-being of every single person, not only who attends school there, but who serves students. And finally, we want to become a district that really exemplifies our fiduciary responsibility to the Mill Creek community in every single way. Particularly around our finances. We've seen some challenges that we've endured lately, but a part of our vision is to make sure that we can sort of move away from those places where we're challenged and make sure that we have a balanced structural budget versus having a structural deficit. Part of our vision, I'll share with you, I'll only think about our vision, our mission and vision. These are some of the ABCs, right? These are things we've highlighted. We want to make sure that our, our vision and mission, it's realistic, but also it's compelling, and it's inspiring. It really paints a picture of where we want to get to in the future. We want to make sure that it drives all of our improvement efforts. Every single day, the actions that we take should be grounded in, here's our mission, here's our vision. We want to make sure that it challenges and inspires each and every person individually and as a collective to be the best that we can be for Mill Creek Township School District as well as the Mill Creek community. Very important. Additionally, it should dictate our strategies and daily actions. We talked a lot about our strategic plan. Strategic planning is something that we are going to continue to prioritize and focus on going into this school year. And finally, we want to make sure that when anyone looks at our vision, they're thinking about, this is the place where they want to be. Those who are currently working for us as well as those who are planning to come on board and join us shortly. We want to make sure that it excites them. The key strategies that I'm not going to go through in its entirety, but these are those tactical approaches that we're going to take. Here's how we are going to accomplish the vision we've set for ourselves. Here are some of the key highlights that I want to share. We are in the business of providing education, quality education to students. We shared earlier that our mission is to provide a world-class education, and we have measures of success that determines whether or not the quality of education is world-class. So everything that we do must be grounded in, is this meeting the needs of all of our students? We need to have some strategies that are non-negotiable behaviors. I can tell you, one of them right now is coaching and development of every single person in the district, especially our leaders. That's a non-negotiable. Improving communication for internal and external stakeholders, that's a non-negotiable. There are some items, when we speak of an item as being a non-negotiable, it means that doesn't matter what one's background is, where you land in the organization's hierarchy, or what you're teaching or where you're leading, there's some non-negotiable behaviors that we expect of every single person. And it has to be a system of shared accountability where we hold in each other accountable, but ultimately, my goal is to hold myself and everyone else accountable to these non-negotiables. We want to make sure that we continue, and you've heard me say this over and over again, to ground every decision that we make, 100% of those decisions, incredible, reliable, and up-to-date research. Very, very important. We don't want to be in a place where we're just relying on our experiences to make mission critical decisions. The decisions must be data-driven, must be research-based. Additionally, we want to make sure that each strategy, as we continue to examine them, supports the attainment of the mission and vision that we will, we've agreed on. That is a mission that was established as well as the vision that we've established as a core team. Building on, again, an auto-research base sort of leadership pundit's work, Patrick Lencioni, we spent the past two years as a core executive leadership team deciding and agreeing on our own mission. And so high-functioning organizations oftentimes have the organization's mission, but in each department is encouraged to think about their own individual mission statement. What do they want to do and accomplish under the umbrella or the auspices of the overall organization? The core team, we spent the last two years working and landing on our own mission statement at our summer leadership academy two weeks ago, I think it is now. We started and we previewed for every single school and give them the opportunity to start to create their individual mission statement, and that's a work in progress. The goal is by the end of the year for each school to have their own individual mission statement that aligns in a strong way to two things. One, to the district's overall mission as well as to the core team's mission. And our mission that we landed on, and you've heard and seen this multiple times, is that we are committed to just meeting every single need of every stakeholder every single day because we believe and truly they deserve it. What is one way to be activate this mission? The core executive team meets once a week, and every single week during our meetings, we always start our meeting with having every member of the core team share a strategic action that they've taken or an experience that they've had within the past seven days between meetings that strongly aligns to our mission. It's a best practice. It's a way for us to keep our mission alive and well, and for folks to understand that this is not just another statement that is going to sit on the shelf. Our goal is to make sure that it aligns to everything we're doing every single day. We've landed on our core values as a, as a school district led by the core team. And every single day, we try to exemplify these. And when we fall short, we are open to receiving feedback, feedback that we've fallen short. The three core values we've landed on, one, family first. We prioritize making sure that everyone, regardless of the work we're doing, we're elevating and highlighting the importance of family. The second is to make sure that there's continuous learning. You've seen this in our professional development scope and sequence or offerings. Every single person, 100% of the persons in the district should embark upon continuous learning, and that includes yours truly. Because we always have to have this orientation of there's, there's so, there, there's so much that we yet do not know as yet, and we have to get better. And finally, comes back to why we're here. One of our core values is always put in students first. Every decision that we make must get come back to, is this meeting the needs of the almost 7,000 students that we're serving? Our strategic anchors are, the strategic anchors are those key components that would always guide 100% of the decisions that we make. The three strategic anchors, and again, you see the number three reoccurring, this is what a lot of leadership experts and pundits and certainly Lencioni reminds us that you do not want to have five to six, five to seven, or seven to 10. One, data-driven decisions. We're committed to making sure that our decisions are data-driven. Two, the students center decisions. Again, you'll see students center decisions reoccurring over and over again. I have to remind myself every day, I want to make sure that every person in this district is getting a reminder. We are in the business of students, and every decision we make should be about them. And three, maximizing resources. How do we maximize the plethora of resources that we receive every single day? And they fall under, under the auspices of human resources, curriculum and instruction resources, and certainly financial resources, right? There are some areas of growth certainly in each of those, and I'm cognizant of those, but we will continue to work towards them. And as we think about what's important right now, this is really about priorities, and, and this can change from day to day. But I truly believe that while these were important last year, we're going into school year 22-23, still prioritizing data-driven decisions, refining our focus on goal-setting. You know, again, one of our pride points is last year, we had 100% of our teachers who worked with your principals and assistant principals to set goals. Similarly, 100% of our building leaders and core team members have also set goals and are working towards achieving those goals and refining them when we do not achieve them. And finally, we want to be able to develop a cadre of high-impact instructional leaders. There's research that tells us that one of the, the key pieces of research we looked at and will continue to utilize is the research that comes out of the Wallace Foundation and University of Washington that looks at the A principal supervisory standards, which is what we've been focused on. We have to create a cadre of high-impact instructional leaders. As we think about the work we are doing in going from growing from good to great, and the vision we've set for ourselves, the, the, the content of the seminal text reminds us that there is this hedgehog concept, and the hedgehog concept has been one of the primary reasons that the researchers have found that resulted in many of those companies becoming more than 10X companies, high-performing companies, companies that have certainly maximized and optimized their performance. And the, the researcher talks about the fact that, the fact that when you think of the hedgehog concept, it's looking at the relationship between the fox and the hedgehog. It is said that the fox knows very little about a whole lot of things. Now, what the research found is that there are companies who wanted to take on a lot, who bit off more than they can chew, who wanted to be experts in many different areas. And many of those companies did not become good-to-great companies. They did not have tremendous and measurable success. Conversely, the hedgehog, it is said, knows a lot about a single thing. And the researcher really sort of drove home this point by talking about the fact that the interaction between the fox and the hedgehog would see it in an instance where the fox is constantly thinking about, how can he kill and eat the hedgehog? And he thinks a lot about it. He strategizes, think about 10 different approaches, coming from a tree, coming from the ground, but each time that he attacks the hedgehog, the hedgehog does one thing. Balls up and has his protective shell. The hedgehog knows how to survive. Because if you survive, you can live to see another day and get things done. The hedgehog concept is based on this idea that in this case, I'm using school districts. School districts who decide to be experts at a million things or leaders will not get to become good-to-great districts or schools or leaders. So we want to prioritize our hedgehog concept. What is the one thing that we want to know a whole lot about, and the one thing that we want to do very, very well? Where have we landed? It's around our instructional core. That's our core concept or hedgehog. It's making sure that we are focused on developing 100% of our leaders to become level five leaders, particularly within this arena of instructional leadership. Secondly, is to make sure that we become really good and conversant at data-driven decision-making. The expectation is that our leaders, and I don't expect this to happen overnight, but we've started this work already, will ground, will anchor 100% of their decisions incredible, research-based data. To make sure that we have targeted and differentiated professional development. The cavalry isn't coming, and certainly given our current job market, we know that the people that we have in place, we have to commit to developing them, to building capacity. And with the board's support, we've started our work last year with a lot of exposure to national and local professional development. And finally, this idea of prudent coaching and goal-setting, and I have OKRs highlighted there, this is from one of our seminal texts from two years ago, Measure What Matters by Bill Mr. Door, which speaks to the fact that high-functioning organizations not only set goals, but they set aggressive goals. And using the OKR approach, which is observation key results, they're able to monitor those goals frequently. A practice that we've started here as a core team is to talk about it a lot of frequency about the goals that each core team member has set, and we monitor those. There are many occasions where we have core team members sometimes doing our weekly meetings, bring their, a particular goal or objective into the core team meeting, and they highlight what are the key strategies that they want to utilize, and we unpack it, we interrogate it, we push each other's thinking. We have folks go back to their offices because we give them feedback that says, while you set this goal, these are not, this is not a way to achieve the goal. Because we want to make sure that we have a lot of transparency around the goal-setting and goal-sharing, and members of the community will see that being modeled here between the board and the superintendent. We are going to highlight and share the goal that we've set for the superintendent so that we're operating with this place, from this place of transparency. And finally, prudent coaching. Again, you know, one of the sort of points that were shared in the seminal text is the best leaders in the world all have a coach. The most sing, the only single and distinguishing factor sometimes between good athletes and great athletes is not just their ability and their internal motivation and intrinsic values. It's having someone to coach and develop them. This is our core concept. This is our hedgehog, and you'll see and hear about this over and over and over again. With that said, I've shared several goals, and I'm going to certainly take copious notes, and please pause, interrupt, and let's unpack this. Goal one, goal one is a repeat. We've had this goal, no, I apologize. Goal one is not a repeat. Goal one is a new goal. And this goal is to increase the district's professional development offerings in mathematics and skills for teachers and leaders and improve our students' mathematics proficiency and growth scores and PSSA assessment by five points. And, and while with the board's push, I'll certainly refine the wording, and we'll have a couple of iterations of this. Sort of at the heart of the goal is improving our teachers' math pedagogical strategies and improving our students' math scores by five percentage points. I've only added two measures of success because I wanted, I knew that this would be a, a working session, if you may, so I'll pause, have the board digest. Have the board digest this and to receive any feedback. Suggestions and offers.
I think it's an incredibly timely. Goal. As we are adopting a new program K through eight this year. And so um, I appreciate that um, it is hitting right at the exact right time. For us to be thinking about a goal like this.
One of the questions I have, when we talk about five points to the P S S A assessments. Are we going to refer back to the previous year's assessments or would it be more prudent to look to? A pre-COVID assessment and then set that as the baseline and say that we want to improve based on that?
Excellent question, Mr. Linda. Um, I think it's prudent for us to probably look at the pre-COVID data. And so I'll, I'll certainly look at both of those and then bring it back to the board, but that's excellent question for me to think about.
And I, I guess my question is when we say other summative assessments. Will we, is that something that we will have data points throughout the year because the state assessments obviously are a single data point? Um, but I know we've implemented other testing that we're doing throughout the district as the year goes on and, and is that. Enter into the equation so that we are seeing how we're going throughout the year?
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Lubitschek. So um, we, in addition to the state's assessments, when I think of this additional summative assessments, I know that. Our team is working right now feverishly on um, creating. Um, assessments that we can utilize, not only in a formative way, but quarterly assessments and those will be considered summative. And so the ones that we created internally will be used to measure. Yep.
But those are new. We don't have history for those.
We do not. That is correct. Uh, but in creating those assessments, we are certainly going to pull from a lot of public, public release items. To make sure that there's credibility in those assessments. Because ultimately what we want to be able to do is even with the district created. Um, summative or common assessments, um, that we will create, we want to make sure that they have validity around being predictive assessments.
Hi there. Can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
Okay, I, I just wanted to say I really like that you're going to include other assessments other than just the state testing.
Thank you.
Dr. Robbins, as a part of this, can we good to great? What are the scores of a great school district that we compare ourselves to um, as the. The, the law.
So looking at an exemplar, probably within the state of Pennsylvania, you have top two district, top five maybe.
I don't know if that could be part of a goal or something you might want to do, but. Th- there are similar districts to us that are performing better on the math. Um, perhaps making it a goal to call or visit or talk to a couple of those schools and see. What, what they're using, what they're doing. Um, I don't know if you put that in a goal to visit or do you do that?
I think that would be, that, that's a great um, ask um. Certainly. And so I think it's prudent for us to probably have that as a part of our strategy. So tactically we'll make sure and these conversations have started amongst a number of our school leaders already where they plan to visit some of the schools that they consider to be exemplars. So we'll do that. We'll add as a part of our strategy. I, I can certainly add, uh, and you may see this. Then I, I sent, send you an updated version for you to weigh in and provide feedback, maybe as a measure of success. Um, visit to, I, I, I don't want to quantify this, but a visit to exemplary institutions.
I think that would be great.
I think with all, with all, that's a good point. With all these goals, I mean, you're going to have a goal, you're going to have measurements, right?
Yes.
But also, oh, oh, what are the action steps to get, to get there, right? So the big five or the big four, when could be, hey, I'm going to visit so many some pretty school districts this year. I'm going to do this, we're going to do that. So there's actually actions. I think that, that can help you kind of. That helps to the board. So um, you know, if we're struggling with the goal not achieving, maybe we need to shift mid-year or something to adjust those or something. Yeah, that approach isn't working. Maybe we need to do something else. And the measurements just pass fail.
What's that?
The measurement would just be pass fail.
Yeah, yeah.
On that particular symbol.
Yeah, right, right.
Also, they used to do C D T tests. I don't believe they do those anymore. But is there some type of a beginning of the year test, mid-year test and end of the year test that is given now?
Yeah, we have diagnostic assessments and certainly um, this is going to be the first full year as well of our map assessment.
Because that would be helpful to look at those. Maybe you could incorporate that in there?
To have baseline data?
Yeah.
Absolutely, Ms. Nusim. Yes, we will. Um, certainly we are also working on an assessment strategy that uh, will, will be shared throughout the district. And it includes our baseline assessments. Anything else on goal one? And certainly uh, as reminded to the board in terms of process. Um, once I receive this feedback, I will refine um, the goals. But the measures of success, measures of success um, will likely, will not exceed. Um, five measures unless the board has an appetite for additional measures. I'll share it with the board for you all to decide. Uh, both quantitative and qualitative measures, if this meets the expectations.
Just love that it's a math goal too. That's awesome.
Absolutely. Goal two, to improve the instructional leadership competencies of one hundred percent of principals and assistant principals in the district. Um, I, I know we've had a discussion, if I may, uh, seeking clarification. Did we want to add? Professional development here? Do we keep competencies? Is, is it both and? Either or?
I guess I feel like it needs to be something that we can, we can measure. And so um. Yes, professional development, we can measure leadership competencies is a little bit harder. If we have a way to get our arms around that and say we've moved that needle, that would be ideal. But if we don't have a, a, a measurement to say that we've done that, then we'll, we'll, we'll struggle with how, knowing that we've been successful.
Absolutely, Ms. Lubitschek. So I'll reward, certainly have also revisit the measures of success and then I share with the board for your review and feedback. Any additional measures of success jumps out at you or we can just move forward and one, once I send to you in writing. Mr. Sider, can we maybe work on a Google Doc so that board members can weigh in directly? After, yeah, after this. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Thank you. Yep. So we'll have a Google Doc, a shared document that we can all work in from in a live manner.
I guess one other question I have is I know that each of our buildings have a problem with practice. Does, does it make sense for that to be aligned with what we're doing in this particular goal or is not necessarily?
That's an excellent question. I haven't thought of that. But I already like where you're going with this. Because the problem of practice by its very definition allows your school to look at. An issue that they have that is observable and measurable, that will move the needle in how they're performing. It should be something that's a part of their vision.
That would be an outstanding quantifiable direct relationship to how well the competency was. Approached by individuals and then you look at that as a whole for the district.
Yeah.
And not have to single out any one individual.
Excellent, you know, um. Incidentally, I believe. All of our elementary schools have. Adopted the same problem of practice this year, which, which is fine. Um, that's not an issue at all. I think it's, it's a great way for them to sort of seek alignment. So that's something for us to think about. And additionally. In, in sharing the problem of practice research. Um, we've made it clear to school leaders that a problem of practice does not have to last for the entire year. You can have a problem of practice for the first semester. And if you've moved steadily towards achieving it, then you can change. Uh, we saw that in one school last year. Really did change the problem of practice. Uh, but let me sort of figure out that's an excellent push. How to intertwine this, each school's problem of practice um, into goal two. Really like that. Here, I'm, I'm using wait time like a good math teacher. Mrs. Winchell can give me feedback in that. So then I move on. Goal three. Goal three is building capacity in the, in teachers, non-instructional staff and teammates at M E C to improve their efficiencies. Um, and effective communication. To achieve daily operational excellence. Why we've, you know, I have added, and this is a certainly a top down goal. While, why I have added communication to this goal is because um, I've reiterated over and over again to. Our teammates here at M E C who are doing an outstanding job. That um. You know. School leaders and schools and teachers don't work for us. Conversely, we work for them. I've said it from day one. It holds true as a part of my orientation and I've seen it here where we've exemplified that. Um, do we have areas of growth in that area? Absolutely. But we have to grow and get better very quickly because if we do not, this is not going to be the most desired place where people want to work. We have to continue to make sure that we improve communication with individuals who are in buildings. Um, because it's when they reach out to us, whether in, in writing or um, telephonically or in any other way. It's because they need something and that's why we're here. And so that's the reason for this goal. Um. Certainly in order for us to achieve this goal, uh, I'll share those measures of, of success that are there. And again, remain open to receiving any feedback. Is this a goal that the board believed that we should keep in place? Or do we want to go through all seven and then decide which ones eliminate? Thank you. From a process standpoint, I saw it ahead of night from President Winchell. That is helpful. Any measures of success should we move on? This is some, this is a repeat goal as well.
I guess one of the challenges I have with goal three is. It's so large. How do you distill this down to actually say that we're meeting that goal? Or that we're significantly exceeding that goal because it encompasses so many people. Is there a way to, to focus that a little bit more? To say that there's a specific outcome that you want from it? And who exactly are all of the members? The teachers, you know, who teach that, but the non-instructional staff and the teammates. Who are all these people and how many different divisions is this and where does that go?
Excellent question. I want to go back to Mrs. Lubitschek's push earlier and it resonates. While as a superintendent, I certainly will take responsibility for each of our many departments, I think we narrow this down to one or two departments. And so allow me, if you may, to refine this, this goal. And certainly we know one department that will be a part of this and then bring that to the board. Yeah.
And I think the other thing I would just add with regard to measurements is if what we really are talking about is efficiencies, there are measurements around efficiencies. There's cycle time, there's touch points, how many manual touch point, you know, if we're looking at processes, I guess. Um, so I, I think based on where we go with this goal, we'll determine what those metrics should be.
Yeah, thank you. That's very helpful. Goal four, significant improvement in the academic and behavioral outcomes of students in grade scale through twelve. Um, as measured through proficiency and or growth. This goal really speaks to why we're here, why we exist. Academic achievement of students. Uh, what may require some refinement and push from the board certainly for me is what are those measures of success? Do we want to see more quantifiable measures? I try to have a healthy balance. This goal is mostly quantitative, but I'm certainly. If there are some qualitative uh, measures of success that the board has an appetite to add, certainly remain open to that.
Thank you much to the. This pleasure of my math, former math colleagues at the end.
I can't, could you speak into the mic? I can't hear.
To this pleasure of my math colleagues at the end. Goal four and goal one have significant overlap. The only difference between them is you're calling out math in goal one and in goal four. You're calling out all education, which means the math overlaps into this again. So. I, I appreciate that we want to call out math, but maybe there, there's significant overlap between these two.
Thank you for that. I, I, so I wonder, let me, sir. Have the board weigh in on this. I have a wondering.
Well, maybe, you know, one is the hedgehog and four is the fox. Getting back to your earlier comment about how our largest, this is huge features, things like that. So maybe on some of those you want to be a little bit more specific. I know you're talking about it, but. Just a comment.
Yes. So my question um. Is uh, we're calling out a special AP classes here and I just wanted to clarify that if uh, we are differentiating. Um. Professional development that the AP teachers will receive specific training. Um, that's differentiated from other classes that they teach? Is that, does that make sense?
Um, yes, Ms. Philip, absolutely. One hundred percent of our AP teachers will receive different professional development. Many of whom have already started to, to embark upon those. So yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Is that something that we should call out in the measures of success?
Are you asking me?
Uh, yes, you don't have, I don't want to put you in a spot. You don't have to answer that, but when I send the feedback, the document, you certainly feel free to weigh in and uh, make that determination. Do we want to? Yeah.
No, I appreciate that. It was just a question that popped into my head when, when we're, you know, looking at, this is a very, very, you know, specific group of people. So I just wanted to, to ask that question for clarification.
I think that would be a good idea because I know that's a concern that we've heard in the past. Is a chemistry teacher in a, in an in-service that is something that does not pertain to them.
Yeah, that's a good call. Um. Mrs. Nusim, one thing that I'll share and it may be reflected in one of our goals and that is. Uh, we remain committed to targeted and differentiated professional development. With a focus on the differentiated professional development. One of the things that I as an educator. Never necessarily had an excitement around or enjoyment for is when I sat. For a half a day in a PD that had nothing to do with me, but it was cloned professional development opportunity. And so we are moving towards differentiation. I have to give a lot of kudos to. Our PD folks and curriculum folks. Who are leading this work, our, incidentally, our summer symposium, uh, which is a robust. Uh, three days of professional development that is targeted differentiated starts tomorrow. Um, and so we're excited about that. So that's a good call out.
Yeah, I guess I have a question on the behavioral outcomes. Um, we really have one bullet that's pretty targeted.
Yes.
And I don't, I don't want to undervalue that, but should we be looking more broadly with everything that our students have had to deal with with the pandemic to say? Um, you know, are we meeting their needs behaviorally beyond that one as well? Is there a, a second? Target or?
One hundred percent, you know, we, we've seen data from the um. American Medical Association and other public health institutions that have shared one data point that stands out to me. Is that we've seen a significant increase in emergency room visits for students between the ages of, I think, twelve and eighteen for things like suicide ideation. Um, wh- while I want us to probably have additional data points. I don't know how we measure that, but this is why I would love the board to push me on this. But I think there is an opportunity for us to have more than just the single data point around uh, behavioral outcomes, right? That single data point that we have is around. A response to discipline. So yeah, we need a little bit more than that.
So I don't know if our SAP counselors or, you know, mental health professionals in the building could add some. Guidance to this one on how, how they view what they're doing as being successful or not.
Certainly.
Would it be appropriate to add in a measure related to dropout rate? And decreasing the dropout rate?
Very strong suggestion. Thank you. Particularly. While we can have that in general, Mrs. Winchell, maybe also focus on marginalized groups. You know, I can tell you when we've looked at our dropout rate over the last three years, two of which I've been here. More than ninety percent of those students who have dropped out falls into one of those marginalized groups. Students with disabilities. African American or Latinx students. And so we can certainly refine that. Yep. Add that as a measure. Other reactions? Goal five, the last of our. No, sorry, not the last, we have two more. Establish or and or improve military ownership school districts culture. Morale amongst one hundred percent of our teammates and internal stakeholders. This one is a culture morale. Number of measures of success certainly will. Have this. For the board review. I know one thing we've talked about and established that we were not able to get to last year. Because of survey fatigue is the twice a year teammate survey. We remain committed to making sure that this happens. We believe it will give us. Really credible and informed informative data that can drive a lot of next steps. So.
So I know that we've talked about this for a very, very long time. And, you know, as far as a goal about increasing morale. And using a third party. That obviously specializes in education. Now, because there's some that specialize in many other things. And those companies. You know. They have. They're the experts, you know, they they train how to deliver it, they train how to get people to to complete it. But again, I think along the way is. So we have the baseline. So I think in the goal, it's like, what are the steps along the way to increase that morale, right? So like I look at your. Points here and. For example, you know, review and track. Monthly analytics. Or communication metrics at Shurby, you know, that's an action step, right? So, hey, I'm going to communicate with my team with a team once a week or whatever. That's an action step. The second part's clearly a measurement piece, right? To have sixty five percent. And. I don't know what happens if the original benchmark comes in at seventy percent, you know, what, how do you grow that? So I think you, how do we do that? The third, review and analyze responses and results from at least one teammate. That's an action step. Establish effective, consistent, transparent culture, communication, you know, that's an action step. So. Think the action steps to me or what are the things you're going to implement or your core team to elevate that? From the beginning benchmark. To the end, you know, I mean, share with us on that too, because then if. Then like Jason said, hey, pass fail on those action steps. So hey, we've implemented this, you know? And these are the things that, you know, give us progress reports on what we're doing to elevate that. So. Come the, you know, come the spring, when we issue that other. Employees engagement survey. You know.
Yeah. It's helpful.
Another thing that we that we did last year, which I think really helped improve the morale. Is having the M E A meetings in each building and people could just voice their concerns. And I think that we need to continue that and maybe expand it to secretaries and educational assistants. And maybe a quarterly meeting. Because a lot of the things that we saw that were concerns were easily fixed and cost no money. So if you can take care of all those little things, it certainly makes a difference.
The low hanging fruit, yeah.
I would highly recommend like quarterly meetings with interest groups, you know, have a custodian meeting, a. You know, all the different groups once in a while and. You'll hear what their concerns are and things that we can act on right away.
Mrs. Newsom, are you suggesting the quarterly meetings? But. Different agreements in the groups, but core team members or the the meetings that the board will have?
Oh, either, some of both.
Yeah, I don't think it's necessarily just the board. I think it's for both.
Oh, yeah, base, yeah. You could send a couple core team members. To meet with the educational assistants one month and maybe the next or the quarter. And then maybe the next quarter, meet with the sec, just so you get different people listening and reacting. I think that would be invaluable.
It may be a combination.
Sure.
You got a board member with a couple of core leaders. So, so there's that feeling that they're being heard outside of the internal.
Absolutely. And I know as a board member, when I went to those meetings, I learned a lot of things I never knew about the different schools.
Sure.
Um, a lot of positive things.
Want to make sure that the board will have enough under your schedule, time under your schedule for all of those. I mean, the benefit of the ones you had last year with teachers. Just immeasurable, just tremendous success. So we saw how it really drove and inspired a lot of next steps, immediate next steps, because people felt. That they were in an unthreatened environment. How the board sort of. Set set up those meetings. People are willing to just share and they weren't complaining. They were sharing what is on top for them and it allows us to. Resolve many of those. And you know what some of those successes are. One that comes up for me is. We've had a a nursing question for the last, I don't know how many years and. After it just took a single meeting for us to resolve it. So I can see the benefit of that. So we'll certainly talk through to see how we can make that possible.
Again, that's that's an action step. That's one of the big five. We're going to do that. I mean, you do, who'd you deal with?
Yep.
I might suggest that we. Plan on doing that. By. Semesters. And if we had the opportunity to do it quarterly, that'd be fine. But, you know, I think touching base. Twice a year. Would be. An improvement over what has been done and. Will mean a lot. I do think. I think there are a lot of times that people need to be heard. And. They are easy fixes.
One hundred percent.
Haven't made it to the person that can fix it.
Yep.
I think on this goal too, Dr. Roberts imperative to. You know, if looking at the third party. Engagement survey. Have a date there by October fifteenth. So. It doesn't get drifted towards, you know, November, December, then your window. You know, so clearly, hey, we'd like to establish the engagement. Third party, you know, the employee engagement survey by the end of October and then by May, you know, so have an opportunity for school to kind of get reestablished. And and then you can kind of, you know, incorporate all your action steps in between the first and last. But I think it's important to have a start date there.
One hundred percent. Thank you for that.
And that would be an easy way to measure too. If you meet with a group and then we report to you or whoever meets with them reports and, okay, then we get a little update. Here's what's been done about those concerns. You know, obviously, if they wanted to hire five people, there's nothing we can do about that at the moment, but all those little baby things then I think won't get lost.
Excellent. Appreciate it.
The one push I would have on on this goal is. We're going to establish and improve the the district's culture and morale. How much? I mean, because we, I mean, we don't know where the baseline is. So I think that that's, you know, that's a moving target. But are we going to say we're going to try to shoot that? We're going to try to hit. Whatever the baseline is plus five by the next. By the end of the year, I mean, because all these action steps are going to contribute, but. The how much do we want to move that needle? Once we determine the baseline.
Excellent question, Mrs. Lynn. So two thoughts that I have. One is certainly want to look at. What is the, what does research see around sort of? Predictable movement, how how many percentage points? I would, I don't know if I'm being conservative if I say five to ten points. Or I'm being overly ambitious. So.
I think the third part, the third party firm will be able to guide. The ones that have been done in educational settings, they'll, they'll. You know, they'll be able to find out, hey, what's a reasonable baseline? Would you reasonably expect a new one? And whether the action, they'll help you with the action steps too, I think. So. But sixty five percent. Not, I don't know how you came up with that number, sixty five percent, you know. It's a goal, but you know, some organizations, they. They would love that. Other organizations, they would say, oh my god.
Well, our neighbor, e Reinsurance, they have a ninety three percent, I believe, satisfaction rating. We want to compete with them, but I'm not saying that is a goal. Not yet.
I I think to Gary's point, making sure that we're, whatever vendor we choose, we take their guidance and because I think there's some, there's a lot of evidence about whether the first year is truly accurate.
Correct.
Or not, because this is the first time that we're reaching out to people.
Yeah.
And understand what what they recommend.
Very helpful, yeah.
And and you know, the surveys themselves, there's a. I mean, the the administrators are being held accountable for their buildings, whoever, you know, there is a. A learning curve that they they need to understand, you know, especially people that take the survey, what the questions mean. You know? Like, do you have the tools and equipment to be successful? Right, well, like you said, well, no, I want a new computer, whatever. So it's a whole educating the survey takers as well versus just giving them out and take it because you won't get it.
Yep. Thank you.
Sometimes goals can change. What we agreed to today does not necessarily have to be what it is until after we actually get the baseline. So I mean, to have you put a number here today without a vendor. Or to establish what a realistic benchmark in. The, you know, K to twelve arena realistically is in year one. I think it'd be a disservice for you to put a number down now. I think as a board, we may have to agree that a number will come. Later.
I appreciate that. Absolutely. And what I heard earlier from board members is. Maybe we establish. A process where we revisit in the goals quarterly midyear point. Using a sort of that O K R approach. So that is helpful. Anything else on goal five or move to six? Goal six, it's one of our new goals, and that is. With specificity around human resources. Direct. New and refined existing systems, processes, protocols in a personal department in order to improve recruitment or retention. So we're very specific around what we want to improve recruitment and retention. Structures and protocols. And then also we have timely communication between departments and teammates. Again, not. Too many me- measures of success, certainly one that would appreciate a board weighing in on this as well, certainly inviting you to do so. And then I'll have some additional measures of success. Once I speak with our department heads for these departments.
I think for this is the fact that we have a consultant coming in, I think is going to guide a lot of the action steps that you. That the district needs to do with a time frame. Execution on those. But that's going to be the measure. Especially the board, Jason. What comes to mind for me is just automating some of the manual processes that we. That we go through right now. Yeah, and whether they expect of S L A's or service level agreements with our. Partners, our colleagues and things like that, expectations of the deliverables.
Yep.
Some some measure of the efficiency of each of the processes that we're going to approach. We have a response time in communication, but obviously response time. And then again, how much manual intervention, how many touch points can we reduce those, minimize those? Streamline where we can.
Yeah.
Would a measurement? Be that we are in the process of or implementing the recommendations made by? The. Person that is. Taking a look at that department. I mean, again. One of the recommendations might be we need five more people and I, you know, we may not be able to actually hire five more people, but I'm seeing. And it. A reasonable attempt made at implementing the recommendations given to us.
Will that be a measure of success or will that be tactical decision that we make? An action step?
Could it be, right, could it be that? We did that or we didn't do that?
I think the measurable part of that might be the actual execution by a certain time. Maybe the actual execution of a timeframe. You know, so if they come back and say, hey, we think these are some recommendations by midyear or the end of the year, you need to implement. I think that would be a measurable thing. You know?
And I and I might tweak the, where we have ninety percent of our leaders and teachers. I think we want to expand that because we've got some retention issues in in other areas. And and maybe we can't get to ninety percent with those groups, but what is? If that's a priority, how do we have the goal for that?
So looking at our current baseline data to determine. How we probably. Look at individual groups, right? Thank you for that.
Would there be value in a touch point that looked at the efficiency of the utilization of staffing? To reduce the number of hours of potential overtime or? Look at how? That. The oper- operational efficiency. Of the area.
One hundred percent, yeah. It's one of the things that the Infinity Consulting that we'll have them look at as well, to at least collaborate with them on there. Yes.
When you calculate a retention rate. Do you include people? That retire? I mean, if you're retiring, it's not really that you're not retaining them. Do you include people that move out of town? No, I I just don't know. Sometimes the retention rate is going to fluctuate based on the number of. Factors that are out of our control.
I believe the only group that will be excluded will be retirees, but even those who move out, regardless of the reason that they leave the district. They will be calculated in the retention rate.
Maybe retirees could be, you know, some people like, I just. This, and I just want out. I want to retire. I'm leaving.
Sure.
You know, so is that because, no, I'm retiring because I've been here thirty years and my husband's retiring, traveling more? Or it's like retiring because the environment is just, they don't want to be there anymore. So that's kind of a, I can see both sides of retirees. Because how many people have said, hey, I'm retiring. I just, I don't want, things have changed. I don't want, I'm not coming back. I'm not going to do it.
Now, I would, I would love to see and put together a scorecard that shows different groups, different types of leaves. You know, even leaves of absence impact our efficiency and our effectiveness within the buildings and understanding. They're not necessarily negatives, but but to be able to look at that data and say, where are we and where are we going?
There'll probably be some noise in the system. Retirees, but yeah. Well, maybe it goes back to the exit interviews, right? Consistent exit interviews with solid. You know? Consistent. You know, process, you know?
And there's a lot of data that says teachers. Go fifty percent make it to five years. It doesn't feel like that in our district, but it would be nice to see the data to say. You know, based on years of service or people leaving at a different, but you know, those are the kinds of things that I would like the consultant to come back and give us.
Other side too, that you just flushed out.
The different looks at. Which people are leaving and. Is there anything that we can strategically do about it?
Yeah.
Very helpful.
If you see a pocket, you can focus on that. Yeah, good point. That's a real good point. The exit interview is meaningless if they're on action with them out. Correct.
Agreed. One hundred percent. Thank you.
Before we step forward to seven, someone mentioned something about attendance. That would be a very measurable thing that could relate directly to goal number five. Because attendance is usually linked to morale of an employer. I absenteeism typically signifies low morale within an institution. So if we're looking at morale and improving morale, we should theoretically see a decrease in absenteeism associated with that. That may be a quality measurement point.
Especially if you identify it within buildings or location, you know, departments, you know?
That's an excellent, excellent suggestion, Mrs. Lynn. And only caveat to that is. Our current reality. Covid has been a curve ball. And so I I wonder if. Our baseline data for attendance. Will have to be. Pre covid. But as a result of covid. As a public health crises. We've seen the impact on not only the physical health, but mentally, the emotional health of a lot of our teammates. And and anecdotally, many of them will share with you that either there, we've heard terminology such as long haulers. On other ears, how does that impact absenteeism? But I I believe though, and at least for us to get the data, I would, we need to build this in. We need to look at absenteeism as a key measure. We need to look at absenteeism as a key measure. Yeah, I've, it's noted.
I didn't realize where Mike was going with his question. I was thinking that you meant student absenteeism when you look at, yeah. But that's also a measure when you look at, you know, our students back on goal.
Four for.
Yeah, four when we talk about behavior outcomes, there's a correlation between student attendance.
Student attendance.
Jumping around a little.
No, I like this, but I'm also, and not to defend it, but I'm also thinking, you know, what we've seen, right, with, as a result of COVID, now this, this, this desire and appetite for cyber school. But I think we still need to get that data. So I'll, I'll build in as a measure, that's goal four. Student attendance. Yes, thank you, um, Mrs. Lupicheck and Mr. Lindesk. Student attendance, thank you for that. Anything else in goal six before we jump to seven? Goal seven, to increase efficiency towards balancing the district's budget and make significant progress towards eliminating the structural deficit incurred during the nineteen, between school year nineteen, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty-two. Certainly this, the wording will be refined in collaboration with our CFO. Um, and then we will establish some measures of success for the board to review and provide input. Uh, does the board have a little bit of an appetite for this one for now? Any push on this, thoughts?
Oh, a couple, couple of things on my end, just, uh, I know we've talked a number of times, you know, you had the cloud of asset money expiring in a year or two, right, two years? But also I know when we take a look at structural deficits, we think about the expense side. And I know revenue side's hard to control, but we do have an opportunity. And somehow maybe we get in there about trying to get students back from milk crates from the charters. You know, so if you have twenty-five students come back, it's a half a million dollars, you know? And, and it could be something to get them back, uh, inside the, uh, especially the critical grades, you know? Kids entering middle school, kids entering, uh, you know, high school, ninth grade, juncture. I mean, for every student we get back, that's fifteen to twenty thousand. And I think that helps a long way too.
Yeah, I can see this have been a trickle-down goal as well, where, um, the expectation is that school leaders will have a goal of recruiting. Right, so yeah. And school leaders, I mean, they are excellent at connecting with your communities and talking with parents and getting students to come back. So we'll certainly have, extend the conversation to include our stu- school leaders. So in terms of the seven goals that I proposed, what I, uh, as a next step, I'll work with, um, Mrs. Sitter for us to create a Google Doc with the seven goals and the, the stated measures of success here. President Mitchell, you and I can establish a time at some point around when we want to have some completion of this process, um, to get the goals for approval. I, I do not believe we have to approve under twenty-second of August.
I think Mike just.
No, we approved, I believe, in September last.
September.
Beautiful.
So yeah, it's definitely a work in process.
So that gives us some time.
Take our time.
Beautiful, yeah. Thank you for that. Mrs. Lupcheck?
No, I, I guess one of the questions that I have is whether seven is, is too much. And whether that one of the next steps is to prioritize and see which are the most important ones. I'm, I'm, I'm not sure.
My, as, as a best practice, what I, I, I know we talked about last year was five was the number. And so in sharing these seven, the goal is for us to, I guess we'll establish a process, how do we land on which five the board wants to see? Uh, my ask is that the board, um, decide on which five, and I'm certainly, because each of them, um, are really tightly aligned to the vision that I, I've established with, with the core team. So my ask would be respectfully for the board to decide on here the five goals that of the seven, we want you to focus on.
Yeah, for the, for the, for the board members who just, this is our first time through, then our last year, we started with about seven and we did a, Janine, if you remember, we combined a couple of them, you know, so, um, you know, like the one about the bath and the other one. So, you know, keep an open mind on that. Can some of them be combined? Or if some of them that you've had last year are kind of, okay, they're in motion now, can they continue without being necessarily a goal, you know?
And I see some overlap in some of them already anyways, to Mr. Lind's point earlier, so I think we should be able to.
That definitely.
Get to five.
Combine them.
Yep.
I can make comment about goal seven. Obviously, I, I feel very strongly about this, but this is a, is the basic response, this is one of your core responsibilities, superintendent. So I don't necessarily know that it needs to be a goal since it is one of the standards of your position, is to be a, be responsible for the financial outcome of the district. Um, I think that the board can weigh heavily to say that the outcome is we want a structural balanced budget, but where we want to be. I would challenge that, and this comes to your, your conversation earlier tonight. I would challenge that maybe one of your goals that's not listed here is that we need a strategic plan for how we get to being a top five school district. And what are those steps over the year? Because that's going to come into, what are the human resources capitals we're going to need? What is the curriculum capital that we're going to need over that course? What is the financial resources that we're going to need? And that plays into the how we're going to balance people, budget, instructional. Maybe that's, that's more of a year-long process and maybe not the, we're not going to have the outcomes, but the, the measurable is we have a map for how we get to a five district.
Yes. So I'm hearing goal eight. Having goal number eight as to establish or to create, start to create a strategic plan that outline, clearly outlines the vision of becoming a top five percent school district and then have some measures of success. So with the goal, with the district, the more we're likely focused on then, thank you. Are the measures of success that you, you're talking about, right? What are those strategic actions that we're going to take? I'll certainly massage it and send something to the board.
I think that if we get to a landing point on that concept.
Yes.
That will also make the goal-setting process over the next multiple years very straightforward because we'll have a defined outcome that we want, and then the goals will align to getting there.
Very helpful.
Sets the foundation.
Sets the foundation for where all the goals will be in the sequential years moving forward.
Very helpful. Mike, that is strong. Thank you for that, yep.
So, Mike, as I understand what you just said, you took a goal out, but you added another one in. Is that what you did?
Yes, effectively said seven's already a core responsibility, so wow, I want seven there. I, I feel that.
Seven will be, seven will be incorporated in eight probably somehow.
Well, it, it, it would, it would definitely be incorporated in eight because
Correct.
in order to get there, it's going to have to be grounded in, you know, and I know that I've had this conversation uh, with Mr. O'Toole and Dr. Roberts. It's not just about money, it's about how you plan people, how you plan curriculum. All of those things, the better that we plan them out, the easier it is to plan the money. Because we have to make assumptions and we'd rather know where we're going with the curriculum and the resources and the IT and the people. This way it's not just big chunks of money assigned and hopefully we guessed right.
Absolutely, agreed.
So is it the desire of the board to cut this down to five this evening so that time is not wasted fleshing it out? Or do you want to flesh out? I mean, for example, in number seven, I understand what you're saying and that makes perfect sense. I'm fine with incorporating that in other things and not having it be a separate goal in and of itself. Any other thoughts?
I was thinking, if we're going to do a Google Doc, maybe we can rank them, everyone can rank the different goals. And then figure out from there where we as a board think should be one through five. Or, and, and you think anything should be folded in? At that, that's a good place to do it, and we have that, we have that as a Google Doc.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, board. Uh, so those are, are for the goals. As I wrap up, I know that this really aligns the conversation we just had and Mr. Lind's suggestion around goal eight, and that's a strategic plan. Um, while I recognize the importance of this, having a strategic plan in place, as I think about the context in which we sat for the past two years, and I've shared this as well with our, um, admin council at SLA. Peter Drucker, certainly, um, you know, prominent management consultant reminds us that culture is strategy for breakfast and lunch. And we've seen over the last couple of years, the importance of really establishing a strong culture. Spending an inordinate amount of time building a culture that really meets the needs of people in doing an unprecedented time. And, and how do we do that? I think we look at practices that have worked for us, practices that have worked for our organizations, whether K-12 or other. But we are not negating the importance of strategic planning, and I actually believe that this is a good time going into year three. This is a right time in year three. I've thought about it a lot as well, for us to look at a solid and robust strategic plan. But it was critical for us to establish culture first, and, and so we did. And we'll continue to build in a culture. I want to share at a high level, just our return to school, I know this has to be on top for each of you, it's on top for us. As we prepare with ten days, exactly ten days before teachers return to a, a warm and celebratory welcome back. She doesn't like lots of roses and flowers, but thanks to Mrs. Sitter, she's been leading this charge with, um, some of our other teammates around making sure that we have a welcome back for teachers and staff that they truly deserve, the twenty-fifth. So we're excited about it. Um, but even as we're planning and preparing, there's so many moving parts, as you can imagine. And, um, the three that I wanted to highlight for you, and you'll get a lot more details certainly from me during our weekly updates, which will resume next week. So I'll have those back, Mrs. Vincel, they'll, they're back in the calendar.
Thank you.
Building readiness, you know, we are in the midst of hundred and twenty plus million dollars renovation and capital project, because the, the board has committed to, um, and, and aligned with my vision for us to have really state-of-the-art updated buildings for our students and community, buildings that were outlive and outlast us. And so it's the right thing to do, but again, given some of the sort of the vicissitudes of COVID and the pandemic, one of which is the supply chain issue. We have been, for lack of a better term, curtailed, handicapped, facing lots of impediments. Uh, but our team is still working diligently towards getting our buildings ready. Um, I, I, I'm happy to report that, you know, received a lot of frequent and timely updates from Mike Gallagher and, and Aaron O'Toole about where we are. Uh, the three of us, I have visited, uh, a construction sites with them and schools that are under construction multiple times this summer to make sure that we keep our finger on the pulse. And, uh, our biggest concern right now certainly is just one of our buildings, one of our largest buildings, but we will get to that. Airflow is a concern, the cleanliness of the building, you know, each year we usually welcome our teachers and staff back to a building that has experienced a deep cleaning. We will have communication that goes out sometime this week to all of our stakeholders, just again, asking for grace. We're not going to have the kind of deep cleaning we usually have. Um, it's hard to have deep cleaning when we still have, um, a big, I don't know, twenty-ton crane sitting outside, still working at nights, right? And, and the construction will be there, you know, we, we have to be in the midst of figuring out right now what happens between now and December, how much of the construction continues. Uh, but ultimate goal of having, um, our students and staff sit in and learn in a really state-of-the-art building. So building readiness and renovation, we are in a good place. Uh, there is just the one building that's a little bit of a concern, but we, we will get there, I think we will. Things are changing daily. Human resources and personnel, teachers, support staff, leaders, safety and security, um, we have vacancies in at least, um, three of these areas, teacher, support staff, and certainly safety and security. Happy to report that we have one hundred percent of our leaders in place. I would say ninety-nine percent because we still have one support position outstanding, that's the, the interim admin officer position. But other than that, all of our building leaders and district leaders are in place. So I'm excited about that, happy to report in that. Um, teachers, little bit of a curveball, but I certainly empathize with, um, their decision. We know that they are school districts, neighboring school districts that have decided to invoke their contractual sixty-day hold on their teachers who are leaving the district. That is not my orientation philosophically, I don't agree with that. I believe you, you know, you're getting in the way of someone's decision that meets the needs of their family or their personal professional pursuit. Uh, but I also empathize with my colleagues who have decided to administer the sixty-day hold. The, the impact on us i- is less than ten teachers, but having one teacher short is still a significant impact. So because of the sixty-day hold, it is my understanding that those teachers will not be able to start with us until October tenth. Um, so we will, of course, have a contingency plan in place and have, uh, LOAs, uh, and subs as needed to support our young people. Um, the grade level band that will be mostly impacted by less than ten teachers will be our K-5 students. So again, we'll make sure that we get in there and, and provide some contingencies. Curriculum and instruction, um, kudos to the curriculum instruction team. Um, really excited about the work that they've done in the last year, certainly the work during the summer. Uh, and, and I believe that, uh, we will have all of our necessary and, and required curriculum supplies, textbooks, uh, lesson guidance and so forth in place on day one of school. Um, certainly we always, it's inevitable with, with curriculum instruction that, um, we will have some textbook additional requests, but we will meet those, I think in an expeditious way. I, I believe that a team that's in place and certainly with my, um, oversight, we will make sure that we have what our students and our teachers need uh, within the first thirty days of the school year, even if they do not have those on day one or week one. High-level update, I'll certainly pause the questions if you may have any of those. If not, the San Kofa bird. The San Kofa bird is a part of, uh, a, a, a fable on the continent of Africa. There are some tribes who, um, they, they revere, they value the San Kofa bird. And it's this mythical, mythical bird, and you see it's, it's looking back. And it appears to be grabbing an egg in its beak. The symbol of the San Kofa bird is many of the leaders and elders believe that in order for you to move forward in a positive and successful way, it, it's always prudent to look back and only bring forth that which is important. It's always important to look back, but only to bring forth that which is important. And this is how it applies to us is thinking of our practices, what can we look back on from the last couple of years to bring forth? And there's much that we can. The one that I want to highlight tonight, the one practice that we are going to look back and bring forth into this school year is teaching and leading with empathy. Forbes, one of our preeminent leadership researchers, publishers, shared that empathy recently, empathy is the most important leadership competency to lead during this time. And I'm glad to see that because it resonates. We started utilizing empathy as a theme in this district two years ago. This is some of the data pointed Qualtrics, not a very prominent and credible uh, data researchers have shared, just around what people are experiencing. It is clear that we still have a lot of work to do in this country, certainly in our communities, where only twenty percent of people make decisions based on empathy and compassion. I do not want us to be a district that is not, that falls within that twenty percent. We are going to continue to teach and lead from an orientation that is empathetic. In order for us to achieve the mission and certainly the vision that I've shared earlier with the board and the community. I'm excited about what is to come, and I appreciate the board's time tonight as we talk through this mission-critical component of my work, of our work together around goal setting. So thank you all. I'm certainly open to any additional questions if you may have them.
I think this is a great start and appreciate the time that you put in carving this out for us. I think that we still have a little bit of work, but I think it's a really good start.
Any other questions? Okay. At 3.01, Dr. Roberts talked about the vision. 3.02, return to schools. 3.03. Item four, old business, any old business. During none. Item five, new business, any new business. During none. Six remarks. I just would like to let everyone know that the Millcreek Township School District will have an addition, additional instruction and student services committee meeting next Monday, 8/22/2022 at 6:00 PM prior to the regularly scheduled board meeting. Primary purpose is to review the Millcreek Township School District Health and Safety Plan as we head back to school. CDC last week revised some of their guidelines. And the Millcreek Township School District Administration will present the Health and Safety Plan to the board and public before adopting it at the board meeting that will follow. Public will be able to view the plan prior to the meeting once the agendas are finalized and released to the public late next week. I would encourage all interested parties to attend in person or view via Zoom. Thank you. Any other comments?
I just would like to know if there's a way for us to get that front and center, that meeting, front and center on the webpage because of the fact that we are going to be presenting, discussing. Parents will have the opportunity to ask questions, but then we will be voting on it that same night. And so I don't want a parent to miss an opportunity to give input if in fact they would like to do that.
Yes, Mrs. Vincel. We will make sure that it's front and center on the website.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Dr. Roberts?
Thank you. With some brevity tonight, just tremendous gratitude for, to the board for your time tonight, talking through this goal setting process. Certainly looking forward to, if at all, receiving any feedback and input from members of the community. I will collaborate with other members of the core team as we finalize our goals for next year. Looking forward to. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Item seven, adjournment. As a reminder, this evening's agenda, as well as several additional informational items are on our website, www.mtsd.org. Please visit us and like us on our Facebook page, Millcreek Township School District. And a reminder to the board, we'll be returning to executive session for personnel after this adjournment. Can I have a motion for adjournment?
Motion?
Let's have a second. Second. Thank you. Any discussion? During none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against nay, we are adjourned.